Good evening. This is the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is Wednesday, March 5th. It is 7:00 PM. We have with us tonight Member Tim Hegler, Drew Delaney. I'm John Lee. We have Dave Anderson, Mark Major, Shane Dontermont, Lauren McColsky, and Patrick DeShane's from Economic Development. Okay. So, the first case we have tonight is case number 25-1, Wall Street Development Corp., 3 Dupie Street. And this is a modification of a previously issued comprehensive permit under Mass. Generalized 40B. And this is where we had already approved in eight-unit, single-family dwellings. And now, the applicant has purchased an additional house lot and now wants to bring it up to 12 units in this development. So, we have -- we did a peer review on this. And we have a letter from Tetra Tech, the peer review company. And it's rather, you know, extensive. He goes through a number of issues that, you know, he's looked at. And we will go through those tonight. That's the goal. The peer reviewer is, I'm sure he's on his way. And it was just, we wanted to have him here to address any comments. But I think what we can do is we can start with Mr. Petrosi with an update of the project, where he is on this. And also that you've provided us a set of, looks like renderings for the proposals. So, do you want to explain where we're at?
So, as you mentioned, we did receive the peer review report, I believe it was yesterday. And we've gone over briefly. And there doesn't seem to be too much in there that is, there's some overlap with what was previously on the approved plans. And we can discuss that separately. But essentially, when we left the last meeting, the board had requested some information regarding the rear yard, the waiver of the rear yard setback to 20 feet. So, what I presented, and essentially, we just presented these plans today. So, I don't think anyone's had a chance to look at it. But essentially, what we're showing is the bump in the back of the house that is primarily for a first-floor master type for an older type of couple or single. And what essentially looks is a bump out of 10 feet by 16. The houses are 32 feet wide, so it's half of the house. And then, the exterior deck would be next to that. So, there's no further encroachment beyond the 20 feet. And what I also presented tonight, I don't have the actual plans. But what you have is some conceptual photos of the homes that were, the first two are homes that we're building down on Union Square. Essentially, it shows that portion of the rear of the houses don't have a second story to them. And that's one of the main concerns of the neighbors on Victoria Lane. They had a concern about having windows, second-story windows, or in this case, with a walkout basement. There'd be actually three stories. But the second-story windows overlooking into their backyard and that they consider that to be, you know, some sort of violation of their privacy, which we, you know, can understand. So, we've, are in the process of developing specific homes, assuming that the waiver is granted, that will have the rear yard, the rear elevation be one and a half stories, partially one and a half stories and/or with some limited window type of exposure to the back. Keeping in mind that one of the aspects of the plan that we're planting, a line of abutis on the rear yard of those homes, we're also open to installing a privacy fence. So, essentially, these are walkout basements. So, essentially, the walkout basement portion of the houses won't be visible to the adjoining neighbors. So, we're open to a lot of, you know, some suggestions along those lines to keep some privacy or some concern, or address that concern. So, by the time we get to the end of the process here, I'll probably have some more definitive elevation if there's, seems to be a favorable direction on the waiver. And so, I see our friend from Tetra Tech has arrived, long time no see. So, you know, that's really all I have to report. Like I said, on the review, there wasn't anything major. But there is overlap on some of the comments that are already noted or already on the present plans that have been approved. And so, we can discuss that. The two engineers can discuss that and remedy whatever other questions come up from the board. So, that's really kind of all my update is for tonight.
You talked about the setbacks on the rear of these houses. What is the actual, how close are they?
20 feet.
20 feet.
The rear yard on the original plan was 30 feet. But the deck extended into that 30 feet with, it's a 10-foot deck. So, it extended into the rear yard by, above and beyond what the zoning is, six additional feet. So, under the zoning, we didn't ask for a waiver, I don't think, under the first application. Under the current zoning, we're allowed, under the zoning, to extend into the setback four feet.
Four feet for the deck.
Right. So, we would have to modify the plan, the existing plan. And then, it'd all have four-foot decks with stairs down as opposed to a 10-foot deck with the building extended out that.
Okay. So, are these going to have decks on the back?
Yeah. The decks are located opposite the bump out, the 10-foot bump out.
So, I'm looking at the plans that you provided us. What is a rendering that you provided us that represents the back of those?
None of them yet.
Okay.
All I wanted to show tonight to be somehow productive, because the architects are busy, to show you what we're doing for the neighbors down on Brooklyn.
Okay.
So, those houses, what you see there tonight, the first two, the houses are 44 feet wide instead of 32. So, if you lop off 12 feet on the right side of each one, opposite the sloped roof, you'll get an idea of what the house will look like. So, it's really the roof and the deck. And that's basically how they would look. Because they're essentially, those houses are 44 by 42. So, if you can visualize a 32 by 56, that's really kind of what we have. That's what we'll be proposing, something along those lines.
Okay. Also, to protect the residents on Victoria Circle, you gave us a plan that shows, it's this one right here that it's like, one of--
Yeah. That's an option. I mean, that's an option for, to incorporate into the design. There's lots of ideas that you can do. I mean, you can look at numerous projects or developments with these types of homes. It seems to be the more desirable to have a more vaulted type of situation in the rear of the house. And in this particular case, we want that area to be where the master bedroom would be.
Okay. Drew, do you have a question?
I do. You spoke about screening or privacy of the abutters just a moment ago?
Yes.
Can you tell me the current status of the lot that's up there right now?
It's completely clear-cut.
Okay. I was just checking. Okay. Thank you. That's the only question I have right now.
Okay.
So, one of the things, you know, if approved and conditioned, it could be, you mentioned a fence and a row of vegetated, a buffer?
Well, usually, you know, if you have a privacy fence, you can add abutis in front of them or, you know, that kind of thing.
Okay.
And depending on how, how much space we have, because we do have a swale that's going behind the houses. So, we'd have to work out the semantics of placement of the fence with the shrubbery.
But you've got 20 feet to deal, so--
Right.
They're 20 feet from the property line.
Right.
Okay.
So, we're open, even to put, you know, if we have room, we could actually plant it on there.
And in this zoning district, I don't have the, I can't see the table in front of it.
B.
It's what?
I think it's B.
It's B, so it's--
20,000 square feet.
No. But the setback from the rear, 30 feet.
30. Yeah, 30, what is required.
Okay. So, thank you for the renderings. I see, Mr. Reardon, good evening. Good to see you. We received the report from you in Tetra Tech, the peer review. And a lot of it, and I think it's helpful that you went through and said, you know, these were, these were issues previously, those are the ones sort of not in, they're just in light gray--
Right.
--on this, which, you know, and some of those, some of those were resolved and some of those were conditioned on this decision. Which, by the way, this is an interesting case because the zoning board never approved this.
Right.
It was denied by the zoning board for safety concerns. The state, the Housing Appeals Committee, sent it back saying to approve it, at which point, the zoning board then filed it with the town clerk, saying that it's being filed by the direction of the Housing Appeals Court. And we even took a vote that we would just do that. We were not going to approve the project. So, Mr. Petrosi's back. And so, we're looking at it again. And it'll be interesting. I don't know how the board's going to vote on this one. But, you know, where it's a modification, we'll have town council give us guidance on that, too.
Right. So, that was my thought process is, we went through a lot of review on the eight-unit project and had a lot of comments and a lot of dialogue. And we had a lot of recommendations on the kind of conditions that, if you were to approve the project, would be included. Given that those conditions never materialized, either through the denial or through the HAC's decision, and the HAC specifically said, "You can't add any more conditions." This is a different animal now. Now, it's a modification where they're increasing the project by 50%. You know, if you're going to consider approving, and we want to make sure that we kept all those conditions from the prior project. So, I just basically pulled them all forward. The numbers on them refer to the numbers in the prior comments. So, we can go track down the history of those and review them if there are any questions. But wanted to make sure those never got lost.
Okay.
And it allowed me to just sort of carry my comments forward rather than sort of rehashing the old stuff.
I hope board members are tracking on this and understand what we're talking about. But if not, we can, we can discuss it later. But, yeah, that was helpful. So, I went through the report. And a lot of the, you know, things, you know, a lot of these items that I think the, you as an engineer need to sit with the engineer for the Dupie Street project and just go through and say, "Okay, how are you going to," you know, such, I'm just looking at one here, "The proposed curb and sidewalk modification at High Plain Street." That was something, you said it should include this. How is that shown? It's not, it's not shown on the plan now? So, is that something that you just give back to the engineer and have it sign?
Yeah. Most of them are self-explanatory, and Rob can, can address it accordingly. You know, the big thing for me is if this, if the set of plans is used to sort of inform a decision, then it needs, everything needs to be accurate, everything needs to be consistent. And we don't want to have sort of random leaders pointing to nowhere and trees sitting in driveways. So, a lot of them are just really, I'm poring through every page, every letter of these plans. If I see something that needs to be fixed, I'm going to note I'm on the plan.
Okay.
There are some, some things that I would consider more substantive, like Lou just mentioned about you've got swales. You know, along both the west and east side, they've essentially have a berm created on that property boundary, which basically interrupts the flow of water across the site and into the, what is currently Dupie Street. We think that needs to be fixed because otherwise, we're just basically damming water that's otherwise moving to Dupie Street. I think it's a relatively easy fix, just lower Dupie Street a little bit and lower the houses a little bit. And that basically eliminates the need for a berm and allows everything to run to where, you know, went normally. You know, it is, I think my biggest concern is that, you know, we had a lot of debate about sort of the density and the lack of available width and, you know, where's the sort of flex space? You know, the flex space hasn't changed. There really isn't much. The amount of space serving the development is the exact same, yet the development's increased by 50%. So, you know, I guess the easy way to put it is those concerns all remain, but they're sort of 50% more acute now because you've got 50% more people using the same infrastructure. You know, the site did get bigger, obviously. They, they got a new parcel. But the infrastructure that serves those eight house, that served the eight houses in the old decision is the same exact infrastructure that serves now, you know, 12 houses.
And for the most part, when you talk about infrastructure, you're talking about the roadway, right?
Exactly.
Yeah. That's the, that's the big concern.
Yeah. And I would say in the, in the space adjacent to it, right? So, there's really, you've got a 20-foot roadway and that's it, right? And you maybe have a couple feet on either side. And then, you're into the property lines. You know, that's my other biggest concern is, right? With such a constrained site, they've got changes all the way up to the property line, which means, well, okay, how are you going to do that without going on those people's property? How are you going to do that and put erosion control in like at the end where the runoff from the site runs towards the abutters? So, we just want to make sure that we've got enough room to do the stuff that they show. Because you can draw it on a plan, but you still have to be able to build it. Like, for example, that relocated catch basin down by High Plain Street. You know, it's right on the property boundary. The catch basin is seven, eight feet deep. There's no way to install that catch basin without impacting that, the abutters' property. So, we have a recommendation in there that before they get any building permits, that you've got to make sure they've secured the rights of access over those properties to do it. Same thing with those trees that are being removed on the opposite side. Those root systems probably extend over into those, into the abutting property. That, those got to be navigated. I think the technical issues are relatively straightforward to fix. We'll see how that, how Rob changes the design. But, you know, I mean, the concerns still remain.
Yeah. As far as trees go, most of, I believe, the site's pretty much cleared. It's, you know--
Well, there's like three or four big trees next to it, 253. So, as you're, as you're heading in off of High Plain Street to the left--
They're still there?
Are those still there?
I don't know. I know the site's pretty, been pretty much cleared. In fact, there was maybe even extra clearing. Okay. So, I think it'd be helpful, you know, like I said, I went through this, highlighted it. Do you want to hit on just a few of the things that, are your biggest concerns, you know, or is it best to have, have you and the engineer, you know, work this out?
Yeah. I don't, I mean, we have, a lot of the technical issues were worked out in the past design because the detention basin's the same sort of design, the way everything's routed is the same, the house placement's pretty much the same, the cul-de-sac is pretty much the same. You know, it's just, it's again, it's that 50% more using the same constrained infrastructure that was before. You know, our two primary concerns are the tightness of construction. How do you prevent impacts from, onto abutting parcels when the construction literally goes up right to the property line at every place? In our mind, the only way you do that is you need to minimize how much change you have at those boundaries. Right now, on both sides, the east and west side, they have a constructed berm on the outer lines, outer edges of their property. A berm does one thing. It prevents what was the natural flow of water. As an engineer, I'm like, okay, the last thing I want to do is change how runoff comes off of other properties onto this site. I want to, I want to make sure that's unimpeded because, you know, if I berm up on each edge, all the water that was crossing those neighbors' lawns that used to go to Dupie Street now can't get there. So, it's going to accumulate behind that berm and run along and end up doing some damage somewhere or trying to find its way out somewhere. I'd prefer to see that, that raised berm go away. I think they can do that. I'll talk with Rob about it to see if he can make it happen. But I don't see any reason why he couldn't. And then, you know, the, again, it's a lack of any available fluff space. They don't, they don't have any place to park an extra car. They don't have any place to sort of leave bicycles. It's just, it's, it's tight. And now, there's 50% more spaces using it.
And, you know, we know that this board raised concerns about traffic safety, the fact that children living here would be walking to schools and, you know, both the elementary school and the middle school. And there's no sidewalk, there's no sidewalks in this development. And, you know, we raised all those concerns, as you did before.
Yeah.
But I think that, you know, the Housing Appeals Committee, which is coming from the state's view, they, they seem to think that affordable housing is more important than some of the safety aspects that we raised.
And I, I understand that concern. You know, there are some mitigating conditions here. This is a pretty straight road, so you can see everything.
Yeah. You said that in your report.
Yeah. It's a dead end. So, I'd be way more concerned if it was a through street, right? Because people tend to drive quicker on those. And it's generally, I mean, it's got some slope to it, but it's not super steep. So, I think there's, you know, there's things that make it a bit safer. But to your point, there's, there's no accommodation. And there's, there's really maybe two feet on either side that they could walk if, if--
Two feet on a 20-foot road, roadway.
Yeah, right, right.
And, and, you know, I often point out to people, the town would never allow this for a conventional subdivision. Nothing ever would be approved like this because of safety concerns. But we've raised those, we denied it, and now, it's back before us. Okay. You mentioned the, the raised berm. Other concerns that you have?
Nothing that I think you guys need to concern yourself about, at least at this point. If Rob and I meet, you know, have an impasse that he doesn't want to sort of do what I suggest or what I ask for, then I'll obviously elevate to you guys. But I don't expect too many issues with him. It does sound like there's some debate on the type of homes that are going to be and the dimensions of those homes. I mean, literally, any change from the plan needs to be looked at because there's, there's not a much, not much space to move into or not much space to change. So, you know, if, if there are going to be changes to the layout of the building, to the shape of the foundations, to the access points, it needs to be shown on the site plans so that, you know, all the related issues can be addressed.
Yeah. I think that's a really good point that, you know, we're viewing this obviously as a major modification. But because this site is so tight and every, basically, it's using up space it doesn't even have, you know, we would, any, any slight changes would have repercussions for, meaning--
Yeah.
If a foundation is moved three or four feet in a different direction, that would, could affect things.
Right.
Okay. Your point is well taken. Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Reardon?
Maybe just one. Could you talk a little bit more about the impact of moving the basin from the previous design and kind of--
It's essentially the same sort of thought process. All, all the water comes down Dupie Street towards High Plain Street. You know, with the addition of that new parcel, basically, everything just shifted down. You know, the one concern I do have, I didn't really speak to it, I was sort of waiting till we addressed the other issues, is there was a bit more room between the basin and the home under the eight-unit option. That basin now is very close to the next home down. As part of the original review process, we identified that as a concern and said, "We need a geotechnical engineer to design that berm around the pond to make sure that that house is safe." Because you're going to be storing four feet of water in a basin. If anything happens to that, to that enclosure, it's going to go right into that house next door. So, we're a little bit concerned because it's a lot closer, not much more space for the water to move out if something does happen. That being said, I'm pretty confident that with the right endorsement on the plan, you can be reasonably certain that the enclosure around that pond is going to be okay.
Okay.
And they have designed a spillway like we recommended back in the prior reviews. That's still included in the plan, all of which I would expect to work as expected.
Does that answer your questions about the basin?
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure there's nothing else in there.
Yeah. Keep in mind, though, one of our comments is, is a requirement for maintaining a certain separation from estimated seasonal high groundwater on a pond. In my opinion, they've sort of not maintained that two feet. So, there might be some changes that come from that that maybe sort of cause us to have a little bit more discussion.
Which would also mean that the retention basin would be raised, raised up higher if they had to meet that two feet?
Yeah. Presumably, the bottom's going to have to come up a few inches. And it's, again, it's, it's not massive, right? But it's about, are you complying or not, are you not complying? If the requirement is two feet, if you've got 1.9 feet, you don't have two feet, right? So, it might be a minor change like that. But, but the bottom line is, you got to show the two feet so we can at least have the conversation.
Okay. Drew?
Yeah. Did you say that, excuse me, Mr. Reardon, previously, you said the basin hasn't changed from the previous project to this?
No. The, sort of the strategy.
Okay. But the basin size?
Basin size has changed.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
During the--
And the shape has changed a little bit. Because if you remember, the way the old plan used to be, it had that sort of wonky curved property line. So, the basin had a sort of a triangular shape. Under the new plan, it's got more of a square shape because the property now is, is more square.
Construction standpoint, who inspects the construction of the basin during that process?
Depends on sort of the, the conditions of approval.
Okay.
The town engineer?
Typically, it'd be the town engineer.
Town engineer would oversee.
Okay. Back to the erosion control, which you mentioned in your letter here, as far as it's noted, referenced several times, installed but no locations are provided. I think one of the abutters at the last meeting mentioned that the property was clear-cut without any erosion control currently in place, which is concerning because obviously, that loosens the ground and runoff and you're not controlling that. Is that, is there not a need for erosion control on this property? I mean, I guess, I see what you say, I'm hearing what the abutters said, and I'm just wondering if, is there ever a case where you can clear-cut a lot and not need to put erosion control in place?
Well, I--
I don't remember the conversation from the last meeting, but this came up back in the fall when Mr. Petrosi started or wanted to start the construction of what was the eight-unit project. He met with typical staff, engineer, conservation agent, building. I don't know if fire was there myself. But it was brought up at that time that there was no erosion control in place. And that was a big concern of both engineering, you know, conservation and building. Last time I checked, I saw erosion control that was out there. I know the conservation agent had been out there as well. I'm not sure if Mr. Petrosi can speak to that. But that was something that I know they tried to address, or we, town tried to address back in November.
Okay.
And there are kind of two issues when it comes to clearing, right? So, there's, erosion control is usually to, to control sort of sediment that runs off of a disturbed site before it gets off your site, right? Silt fence and a, and a, like a hay bale line. The idea behind that is water's going to run through that and any sediment is going to get trapped on the project side. Generally speaking, the clearing is not going to change that very much as long as the ground below it's stable. But the minute you start digging it up and rutting it up, then, then it erodes, that's when you need erosion control. Even if you don't need erosion control, by clearing all those trees, you're increasing the runoff coming from that site. So, typically, there's a requirement for doing temporary controls to make sure that that additional runoff doesn't create damage off the site, too. So, there'd be two things I'd be concerned about. My height, my, as construction progresses, the more activities on the site, and as that site comes up, you know, the site is, is going to be elevated a little bit from its current condition, the concern raises even more because you're going to have more surface that's exposed to erosion, newer materials brought in, freshly moved materials, all of which have a tendency to wash off a lot more than stuff that's been in place for decades, right? Even if, even if you sort of mess up the grass a little bit, if that soil's soil that's been there for years and years, less, more consolidated, less likely to move. The minute you start bringing in new material and shuffling stuff around, that stuff gets really easy to transport. So, you want to make sure before you do any heavy excavation, all of your erosion controls are in place. Problem I have right now is the plan, the erosion control plan says, "Install this stuff per plan." That stuff is not shown on the plan. It's probably not shown on the plan because there's no room to show it on the plan and show the work that has to happen underneath it. So, right now, they show grading going all the way up to the property boundary. My question is, well, how do you-- My question is, well, how do you install a hay bale on your property, install a silt fence on your property, and then do work underneath that fixture? And it's not a question of whether that work has to be done. There isn't any more room, because they need every foot in order to put that in. So what, what our suggestion is, is, okay, you need to show where that erosion control is going. Show that it can be installed on your property. Then show that your work limit can exist beyond, on the property side of that. And then that answers the question of, okay, well, how are we doing this without impacting a budding property? For example, Unit 11 has a, has a retaining wall right next to it. That literally is on the property line. I don't know how you construct that without at least a little bit of trespass onto the abutting parcel. And it's not a, it's not a huge trespass, right? But it's, it's the difference between, well, if it were two feet inside the property line, you'd have room to do your excavation, you'd have room to do your installation, you had room to have your, your hay bale barrier. They, they don't have the two feet. They maybe have three inches or four inches from the property line.
When you, sorry, back to the erosion control, because there is a drawing in, within the set that shows erosion, speaks specifically about erosion control. They talk about temporary stockpiles up on the highest elevation of Dupey Street. Is there concern about that as far as stockpiling that much sort of loose material and potentially washing further to, you know, lower seating elevations?
I would say, yeah, there's a heightened concern about it. Relatively easy to manage stockpiles. What's harder to manage is, like, the space between the houses and the things like that that are going to be otherwise disturbed, and it's still going to be loose soil. So it, it, literally, I'm concerned at every interface between the project and the abut. It doesn't matter what's happening. Unless you're digging a hole and it's going to stay a hole, where everything's going to run into your project and stay in your project, I'm concerned about every edge along that boundary. Now, sort of brings up another point, we made a comment, is, there's always been some confusion on, I think it's the, the east side. The plan calls out bearings and distances on the, on the east, on the west side of Dupey Street. So as I'm facing this Dupey Street from High Plains Street, the right side, we have bearing and distance on that property line. We have no bearing and distance on the other property line. And it says, the width varies. Traditionally, if I've got bearing and distance on one property line and I say, okay, the width is 20 feet, then I know what the other side is. In this case, we don't have a bearing and distance and we don't have a set dimension. So in my mind, there's some uncertainty about where that property boundary actually sits. And given how close everything is, how little space is there, you know, that, I can almost guarantee that's going to be a point of dispute at some point in time, that it should be nailed down. It either should have a bearing and distance stamped by a surveyor, or it should have some dimension that says it is, it is here, as opposed to varies. You know, it says 27 feet varies. Well, is it varied to 29 feet? Is it varied to 26 feet? Yeah, so let's, let's nail that down.
Sorry, I just got a handful more questions here. Can you speak for a couple times about Cape Cod berms throughout the proposed project? In your past existence, in your past experience, Cape Cod berms, plowing snow, what sort of safety issues could potentially be for people that need to walk in the street, because there's no sidewalk provided, with Cape Cod berms being plowed, you know, pieces chipping away from asphalt, things like that?
Yeah, Cape Cod berm and asphalt curb, two sort of different animals. You know, asphalt curb, like, things you see get peeled up and just piled up by plows. It's like an asphalt curb about this big. Cape Cod berm's 12 inches deep. It's keyed into the binder core, so it's, it's pretty robust and pretty rugged, as long as it's built properly.
Have we seen what the detail shows in the drawings and?
Yeah, the detail shows it's being, it's 12 inches deep. It's a traditional Cape Cod berm.
Okay. The other last couple was, you spoke about the water line doing a butter in the sequence as far as how that was going to take place and disrupting their service to the abutters? Is that?
Yeah, so the, what I understand, there's an existing water line in Dupey Street, dead ends of Dupey Street. There, there's a home at number six Dupey Street that is not part of the project, that I presume gets its service from that water line. But it's not addressed in any way. You know, to me, it needs to be at least documented on the plan that, you know, how that is going to be reconnected, where it's going to be reconnected, whose responsibility is to reconnect it. So if it's shown on the plan as being reconnected, then the project owns that responsibility. I don't want there to be any confusion that, okay, well, we're going to dig up this existing water line or shut down this existing water line, without some recognition that someone's getting water from that.
And it was just that one abutter, wasn't anyone else on Dupey Street, to your assumption?
I don't think any, anybody's, I think that's the only home that's not part of the project that, that fronts on Dupey Street. The other two front on High Plains Street. I would assume they get their services from there.
Okay. That's all I have for this time. Thank you. Anybody else have some questions?
At this point, I'd like to open it up to people in the audience. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on it? Yes.
Hi, I'm Janice Salet. I'm at 257 High Plains Street, right on the corner of Dupey and High Plains. And I'm always omitted from Dupey Street, but my only access and egress with my car is through Dupey Street. And that's the way it's been. I've been there for decades. And I very much object, as I said the last time, to more homes being added to the project, because right now, it's going to be overburdened for so many reasons. And they need to have more park, guest parking spaces, green space, and there's also the problem of delivery trucks, FedEx, UPS, postal, whatever, you know, kind of deliveries, food, what people have. And that's going to increase dramatically with eight homes. Plus, you know, if, is it going to be any more? I can't see why there'd be four more added, is really ridiculous. But I want to know, I think I counted 10, 11 homes on there? 12, but, and, but you said there would be eight homes?
Nope.
And now this is showing, so I don't know what I'm looking at, if you could explain it.
So, last time you were here for the meetings, and I know you were here for many of the meetings.
Yes, all through COVID, too.
The, this board denied the eight homes. And it was appealed, and we lost, and the applicant went forward with his eight-home project, or started it, and then bought out one of your neighbors, bought out, after the land was clear cut, he bought another piece of property, and that house is down, coming down.
Exactly, yes.
And so now, he wants to add four more homes to this project, and that's why we're here.
And that's why I object to those four homes. But I was counting these, and why are there 11 homes if there were eight approved?
Because he's adding four more. He bought your neighbor, he?
Yes, but I only count 11. He wanted to put four more onto eight. So where, there's 12 there? Okay, thank you.
There's 12.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, I, I don't, well, regardless, I still think it's.
If, if you count.
The home for three, Dupey Street, is supposed to be.
Counted as one, thank you. That, that's what I was missing. But the fact remains that it's very dangerous to have that many homes in this small space. I have lived in my home for decades. I've been in this town for more decades than I've lived in my home. I've paid taxes, and I, I live, this area, as we've told you during all the other meetings, has the highest water table in the town. It has the worst soil. It's clay-like. And when we get the melting or storms come, my yard gets a pool of water. I used to have a couple of willow trees that somebody cut down when they shouldn't have. But that, as, you know, being said, so I don't understand how putting in this drainage system is going to help my yard. I don't think it will. Because, so I'm concerned if there's going to be any more water flowing down, because it isn't a slant, it's, you know, just knows, you just, the erosion comes, it just keeps pouring down the rain. And so I really am opposed to that. The applicant has been very, trying to be very accommodating, but when it came time to do the surveying, the excavator is like right up to the line. Actually, I think it might be a little over, I'm not sure, or, but it's not final, so I don't know how the final works. But I noticed this morning that he was going, the excavator was going more as you're coming down Dupey Street towards High Plains, to the right. And someone a few days ago had knocked down the survey stake, so I don't know who did it. But the excavator said that he needed more room to get his trucks in. And I actually watched one of the huge trucks come in this morning, and he didn't need any more room. So the extra width there, I, I don't know if you're going to keep it now. It's, I think, was it about 27, Lou, that you've had it widened to?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, to me, is, it's almost right up to my house there, and so if I were to have anything put there, I, I don't know what the setback would have to be. It's like these trucks are coming into my house. But this morning, that huge truck was able to go up the street, only took up the original, what, 20 or 24-foot width? Didn't really need it. Made the turn, had a little trouble making the turn. But I, I just, like, feel this whole project, really, it's getting out of hand with adding too many more homes there. The safety of everybody and my quiet enjoyment of my home, you know, I, I just don't know how people are going to want to move from wherever and to be crammed into a small area. I think it would be a much nicer project if they spread out eight or nine homes, and then gave plenty of guest parking space and green space. And, like I said the last meeting, most people have at least two cars. And then you have someone come visit, then you've got holidays, then you've got personal celebrations at homes. And where are all these people going to park? They're going to wind up saying, oh, a major holiday? No, cops going to come by, we'll just park on the side street there. And that's going to be a problem. And then when the snow comes, we know that's a problem anyway. So, and ice and so forth. And again, even more importantly, for the poor little children, that, the, the safety issue, it's just not there. So those are pretty much my objections. And I also didn't know where we left it, and I don't know if it's up to this board or not, but there's Change Street. Have you looked into trying to cut through Change Street?
Not yet.
Okay, there's only one house on Change Street that leads out to Civil. So I didn't know if that would help alleviate any of the excess, you know, traffic going by. And when they talk about that it's a straight shot going up there, yeah, I can't tell you how many times on that little dirt road, people would go zooming down and then turn around because they realized they took a wrong turn. So there's that aspect that can happen. And if you're going to have a paved road, they're just going to keep zooming through. I, I just don't know how this is going to be solved. I know you guys have a tough job with it, but, you know, there are concerns with that.
Absolutely. And all the concerns that you raised tonight, and you've raised in the past, this board has looked at.
Yes.
And that's why we rejected the project.
Yes.
And it was overturned at the state level. You talked about some of your engineering concerns with water. Mr. Riordan's talking about that.
Yes.
Basically, this project is being built out to the property lines. There's no, there's no extra space. But that's what the applicant has chosen to do on this. There is no, there's no recreation space for the people that live there or children that would live there. There's, you know, as far as guest parking, there's just maybe four.
Two he had originally for the eight.
Yeah, two.
For eight homes.
Yep, two, two visitor parkings at the end. You are 100% right. But we're not dealing with regular zoning laws here.
I appreciate that, yes.
We're dealing with the 40B, the state requirements that towns have, affordable housing. And you heard me say earlier, the town of Walpole would never approve something like this for.
Oh, I know this.
A regular development.
That's why that property sat there for over 20 years with no one buying it, because they knew they couldn't develop on it.
Right. And, and so what we're seeing here is that safety concerns that you've identified, the town, the peer reviewer, this whole board has identified, quality of life issues. It seems like those are not things that are concerned, people at the state level are concerned about, so.
Unfortunately, they don't make a site visit to the property. They look at plans and they make, and they just approve it.
I don't know what they do, but.
I mean, I don't, do they make site visits?
So.
I've never seen, okay, thank you, because no one's ever told me that.
So.
So I don't want to misspeak.
Yeah, I, I don't know what they do. But what I do know is that, you know, we've already had the, the state approved eight units on this, and now we're looking at the modification that's before us.
Right.
So we'll, we'll see how, how this goes.
Right, and I know you guys do the best you can. And like I say, I just feel that to add four more is overburdening. To take, if there's one house there, I could see maybe adding one more home, because there should be more parking space, at least, at least two guest parking spaces for each home. Because if there's going to be no parking in the cul-de-sac, where are these people going to park? They're going to come out onto Dupey Street. And then that's going to create a problem. And then I worry about the fact, emergencies. And, you know, people, I think, oh, well, you know, you don't often have emergencies. But, you know, who wants to have anybody lose a life?
Yeah.
So I think that's all I really, I appreciate all that you guys do.
And we hear your concerns, and I, I think we're trying to get the best thing possible that meets the, you know, the engineering standards that, you know, we need to have, have.
Right, but I, I don't think all these engineering things are going to help the situation with the water, because that's, it's been like that for decades. And I know that, you know, putting in drainage for the project is only going to help the project, but I don't know how it's going to affect the water coming down the roadway. So hopefully, it will. And I thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wants to speak on this project? Yeah, come on up, sir.
June Doyle, Victoria Circle.
I didn't know if he had said there's a berm there already, or?
No, there will be.
There will be.
There will be a berm. You're talking along the property line that backs up to your house?
Uh, yes.
The berm is proposed.
Proposed, right.
And on the, on the, oh, I'm.
I just want to clarify. You said a berm will be there. If a berm is proposed, I'm asking that they remove it.
Okay.
So that, so that the berm won't be there.
Because the concern is that water will back up on the neighbors' property?
Correct.
Okay, based on the engineering?
Correct.
So you think the water from our property is going to go onto their property?
It depends on where you are and the shape of the, the ground of the back of your property. All I can say is, if there is no berm, then there are no impacts. So I want to see no berm that prevents the water from otherwise leaving your property as a normal water.
Okay. On the 20-foot setback, see, now that I, I see these pictures, I thought the deck was going to be in the back, off the 20 feet. So a 10 and 12-foot would have left us eight feet. But 20 feet is from that wall to here. You know, that's what I'm looking at. And 30 feet would be back to the other rail there, which 10 feet is a big difference to have somebody sitting in your backyard. And talking about the clear cut, had he left maybe four or six feet of all the little saplings, I think it would have helped with the neighbors as opposed to just looking at barren land. And the, in the arbovitae, they're, if they're the emerald greens, they're kind of a joke. And I'll be looking at you guys like, you know, they don't do anything. If anything, it'd have to be a green giant. They grow bigger, they grow forever. And what's the spacing going to be on them? 10 feet? Four feet? Two feet? So he could say, I'm putting a row, because that's what he told me, yeah, I'm putting a row of arbovitae. Okay, so he says, I put a row, but I put them 20 feet apart.
Yeah, that's, if approved and conditioned, that's exactly what we would say. And we're familiar with this, and it would probably be something like 10-foot arbovitae planted 10 feet on center. That's the, the term, or 12 feet on center, whatever, whatever is the recommendation, not from the applicant, but from like a landscape architect, as far as how, how best to provide the shielding that, that the neighbors would want. We also understand that a 10-foot arbovitae does not do much the first year, but, you know, in time, they, they would grow. But if approved and conditioned, that would all be laid out very clearly. But if approved and conditioned, that would all be laid out very clearly.
Yeah, 'cause I'm looking at putting green giants in, and now because he wants to make this even further, now it impacts me. I have to go into about 20 green giants, and to get nine footers, they're $800 apiece. So I'm up to like a $16,000 back wall that I have to put in. So, and that's about all I have. I'm just...
Just for clarification, currently what's proposed on the plan is, is the two-greens giant arbovites. Four to five-foot height, at the time of planting, and six-foot spacing along that whole Victoria Street side.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Yes.
Tyler Hool, Victoria Circle, one of the abutters. So last time I had mentioned, or we had talked about, I had mentioned option A, B, and C. We have option A and B. A being what was previously approved by the state, 30-foot setback. B being currently proposed, 20-foot setback minimized, but minimized windows for privacy. Obviously, I'm still keen on if there is an option C. I don't know, but assuming that is out of the question, just some questions on, on the first two. So that, the decks for both options, I don't know where the stairs go, given the distance between the houses. I'm assuming further into the setback, and I'd like to understand how far into the setback. And then, I think I heard tonight, with the state's approved proposal, something about a four-foot deck. I'm not sure if that...
Yep. So, it's, you're always allowed a, a four-foot, a four-foot deck.
Okay.
Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong.
So you're allowed to encroach within the setback up to 48 inches.
Okay.
If it's an open-air deck. And so that could be a deck, it could be stairs, anything like that.
But actually, on the stairs, yeah, as we look at these plans...
Yeah.
Could the stairs come down even further? Well, could they come further into the setback? Not the deck, but the stairs?
It doesn't look like they're shown on this plan, so I don't...
There's no stairs shown on the plan.
Yeah.
So, but, I know, I know the deck can go four feet, but what about the stairs?
Uh, I mean, I think that'd be part of it, right? So it's already, the house itself is already 20 feet from the rear.
Yeah.
It's already encroaching by 10 feet, so it'd be an encroachment of however many feet it would be to the stair.
Well, then, then we're at 14 feet with the deck.
Yeah.
And then, and then the stairs, if they go down, and depending on the elevation of the deck, I mean, I guess I have a concern that, you know, Mr. Hool could be looking at stairs coming right down to almost, almost the property line, and, you know, hi neighbor.
So, actually, I do wanna clarify on this. So what I'm mentioning here, when we're talking about the whole 48 inches, that comes back to our zoning bylaws, Section 6 and 11 has to do with projections. And so uncovered steps that are part of any required egress are not limited, but shall not come within five feet of any rear, or of any lot line. So it's, it wouldn't really be factored into the setback, the stairs.
Okay. But they can't come within five feet of the, the property line?
Correct.
Okay. And that's not a waiver that's been requested at, at this point? So, okay, so does, you know, depending on where those stairs come down on the deck, somebody could come as close to five feet from the property line? And by the way, that goes for any, any development, not just a 40...
Yeah, no, this is, this is the town zoning bylaws requirement.
Got it. Um, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know how wide stairs are, I could make a guess, but I, I won't, so I, I would just like to understand how far that those might come to, towards the property line. And then switching gears a little bit, I wanted to understand a little bit more about lawn and snow maintenance. I know snow is taken care of by the association here. I didn't know if that included driveways as well, and I guess driveways as well. And I guess my point was outdoor home equipment, lawn mowers, snow blowers, lawn mowers, snow blowers, that sort of stuff. I just, I don't know where that'll be stored, and is there potential for a shed back there at some point? Is that something that I need to think about? And I know this is not up to me, but as I give my supporter a recommendation for what was previously approved and what is currently suggested. So I just, I don't know about those things and how they impact a shed, which then obviously is a bigger impact to me.
So, interesting. A shed is allowed in people's backyards, I believe, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Depends on the size, right?
It has to have accessory structure. I mean, it has to meet certain dimension requirements.
But a, a shed, a 10-by-10 shed...
Yeah, if it's a 10-by-10...
I believe can go right to the property line.
As long as it's under 15 feet in height, it can be, well, not right to the property, it's six ba, six feet off the rear. Yeah.
Mr. Riordan.
Unless there are conditions including...
Right. So would, maybe, that could be a condition that the zoning board could put on this, that say, there are no sheds allowed on, on this.
And I would also suggest, so the plan that I have in front of me has a 20-foot setback from the property line to the deck. The deck is about 10 feet, so about 30 feet setbacks. So, I can only review the plan that is submitted. If there are changes, those changes need to be shown on the plan, because it changes roof sizes, it changes stormwater calculations, it changes everything. So I would ask the board that if there are stairs coming from those deck to grave, they need to be shown on the plan. And if the plan is approved, they need to be constructed per the plan, so that there's no, all of a sudden, a suite of stairs comes down from this deck that's eight feet off the ground, straight up to the neighbor's property. Yeah, it comes five feet away, but, but there are already other, the 40B process allows other deviations. So, you know, under this process, the stairs should be shown, so that you guys are approving everything that gets built.
Okay. I, I understand what you're saying. Mr. Petrosi, do you understand what Mr. Riordan's talking about?
No idea.
Okay.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Can I, can I say something?
Hold on, he's, he's still up here. So, I just wanna make sure. We need a, we need a set of plans, and part of it is because this site is so built out, we need to see, it sounds, it sounds weird that we need to see even where the stairs are, but to Mr. Riordan's point, we, that would change, you know, a number of things on the plan. So, that, that needs to be shown on these. And, and that's what you'd be held to. Okay. Do you have anything else, Mr. Riordan?
Last, the plan you're currently looking at is not displayed, correct? It is not.
Okay, understood. So, yeah, I mean, just the last thing, I just don't understand how snow and lawn and what is and is not covered. I know the plowing was, but I didn't know if that covers driveways or not.
So, that would be up to the homeowners' association?
Okay.
And I can ask Mr. Petrosi, you know...
Appreciate it.
Do you have any thoughts on...
I have a few comments. So, just so we're on, we're clear on what the board's discretion is relative to this amendment. Everything that's been approved to date by the Housing Appeals Committee, and you keep making the mention that you didn't vote, but you recorded the decision of the Housing Appeals Committee identical, you didn't suggest any changes, you didn't make any comments, you didn't have any...
We didn't have any, didn't have any choice. Right.
Well, so that decision is an approval. So, we're requesting an amendment to add three net units to the project, okay? Setting aside the 30, the setback for the rear yard waiver. The only, the only issues that this board has discretion over is the four units from here, from here down, and the drainage system. Everything that's on the plan now is cast in stone, let's say, okay? The sewer system, the water system, the infrastructure, the, whatever is shown on the plan, that's sort of set in stone.
But you've, this plan has some changes to that.
Understood. The changes that I've asked for regarding the waiver certainly opens the door for the board to make other conditions related to that particular request for a waiver. And I understand that as part of the discretion of the board. But everything else that is being suggested by Tetra Tech is, if it's not related to these four units and the detention basin, they're not, they're not on the table. So, the roadway that's been approved, the infrastructure that's been approved, that was shown on the previous plan, it's not open for discussion relative to neighbors, abutters, that kind of thing.
So, that's, that's your opinion, because you don't have a, you're not requesting a modification for one part of this project, you're requesting a modification for the whole project.
That's, that's not true. That's not true. So, I, I don't wanna, I'll let the attorneys decide that, you can ask your town council, I'm pretty certain what the answer will be. So, just so we understand, that we're talking about these four units, the infrastructure has already been approved, other than the stormwater management requirement, okay? And so, I'll, I'll be happy to give you the information, and we'll talk about additional buffer, as I've shown, I've had, you know, I have a pretty good understanding of what the, the concerns of the neighbors are. We've worked with them during the tree clearing process, each one of the homeowners had an opportunity to take trees down that they didn't want, or that were hazardous to their own properties. We took them down, and we've been working with the neighbors on both sides for the better part of, since prior to construction and during construction. So, and I want the board to understand that, you know, when you get to the, there's all kinds of semantics over erosion control, when to install them. Most of the time, the tree clearing is done before the erosion control is installed, mainly because trees fall on the erosion control, they disrupt it, they, they, they tear it apart. So, the tree clearing is flagged, the property line has been staked out, the erosion control has been installed along the property line, and quite frankly, I don't see any concern related to stormwater or runoff from the site. The site is very well-controlled, there's temporary basins, we know what we're doing. So, we're not talking about hazardous or an unsafe condition on the site. So, we continue to work, the instruct, the infrastructure is going in, the roadway's been cut in, there's been, I don't know if you folks have been on the site, but, you know, there's many, many, many still, very tall, 60, 70-foot pine trees that are still there, that we're working with the neighbors to remove, if, if it's necessary to remove. And quite frankly, they've all been very cooperative to date. And as far as the entrance from, from Route 27, we have had the engineers stake out the property line, there's no variable width, I think the variable width related to the gravel roadway that was there, not to the dimensions of the right-of-way. The right-of-way is shown on a plan that was recorded in 1916. It's very well established on the plan in the registry, and it's been staked out by our engineers and surveyed on the ground. And we've been working with Mrs. Sallett to make sure that we are, her house unfortunately is very close to the property line, so we're trying to be very, very careful about what we take out, how we take it out, and we've asked for permission whenever we've needed it. So, I don't want this board to get the understanding that we're, you know, going ahead and we're disrupting everybody in the abutters, okay? But the project is approved, it's going forward. The board's decision is related to these four units, and what happens behind those four units for plantings and buffers and other things, those are, those are the discretion of the board. If we work on the 30-foot setback versus the 20, then that opens up other areas where we can talk about enhancing the buffers along the property lines for the people on Victoria Circle.
Okay. So, at this point, I think the best way forward is to have the peer reviewer, Mr. Riordan, talk with your engineer...
Correct.
And go through a lot of the, the items. You know, we've heard some concerns from board members, from some of the neighbors, but, you know, a lot of these items, Mr. Riordan, I think, are, you know, things that you can work out with the, the engineer, and then come back with a revised plan that shows, you know, the modifications that you and Mr. Petrosi's engineer come to an agreement on, that's the best way forward on, on this, and then...
Yeah, as well as captures whatever the current proposed structure dimensions are. If Lou is proposing a different-shaped building, then no shapes need to be put on the plan. And I, I would say it's, if they're a different-shaped building than what the HAC approved, that's a change that needs to be administered as well, too, because if setbacks change, if that's a deviation, we approve on it.
Right. From what's already, what's already been approved. I agree. So, but what we, what we need, Mr. Petrosi, is we need a definitive plan that shows which, you know, where the buildings are going to be, the shape of the buildings, and, you know, all the, all the engineering requirements that, you know, the peer review has identified. And he'll work with your engineer on those things.
Fabulous. We look forward to it.
Okay.
I guess we're at the point where you wanna continue?
Do you wanna continue?
Why not? I have nothing else to do on Wednesdays every other 30 days.
So, what's a, what do you think, another, what are you looking at, a month?
We're, we're very busy, so I have no problems going 30 days or, you know, into April.
Okay. So we have, what is it, April?
April 2nd.
April 2nd?
Yeah, I think that will work for us.
Okay.
Is that a Monday or a Wednesday?
Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday, that's the first Wednesday.
Yeah, so, let's do, I think that, let's, let's say the 5th.
Yes.
If I can just get them to stop taking vacations, I'd be all right. So, let's, let's try for April 2nd.
Okay.
And we'll put Tetra Tech in touch with our engineer.
Mr. Riordan, does that give you time to work with GLM? It's GLM you're using?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So, at the request of the applicant, does somebody wanna make a motion to continue this case until April 2nd at 7 o'clock here at Town Hall? Okay, hold on, we have...
One more question. He had mentioned about the basin, something to do with the...
Yeah, why don't you come up to the microphone, please? Yeah. Boy, you caught us just in time before, yeah.
He said something about the, the new basin, something about the, the abutters, and I was wondering what you were talking about on...
I think, I think you're talking about the abutter on High Plain Street particularly.
Yeah, is it two, is it 253?
Just that one and not, not number eight or current?
No. Just my, my concern is that you've got a volume of water stored above 1,000 gallons directly down there.
Okay. Does that, you, you understand that? Okay. Okay. So, it's been moved by Drew, does somebody want a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Dave. All those in favor of continuing until April 2nd, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so...
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, next up, Moose Hill Road. So, next case, this is board business, this is for a determination of substantial or insubstantial change to a previously issued comprehensive permit under 40B. Request is from the Moose Hill Condominium 40B Development for a proposed change in the unit type from eight ownership units to eight rental units, as well as a project, changes in project design which include removal of garages, location of units, and making all units two-bedroom. So, I believe it's Mr. Murphy?
Yep, Marty Murphy filling in for James Murphy. We're really just asking that no additional hearing is necessary, because this is an insubstantial modification.
Okay. So, I think what we need to do is just take a, a look at the plan, and the board will decide where, where it is.
Are these the plans that just came in today?
We, we had them for a while, a little while, just a little...
Do you wanna come up? Okay, so these, these big plans are just showing the, the renderings as far as the old, front elevation, rear is, all that, right? The, the engineering such as the, the, that still has to be designed out, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Are occupied too?
No.
I hear a whole bunch of papers rustling around.
We have both.
You said?
We do have both.
Oh, okay, we do, can I see one of the full sets? So as you correctly said, what we're looking at is, is this a major or minor modification? And the unit number stays the same, the, the big issue is they've, they've been reconfigured, the bedroom count actually goes down in this, this plan. The, it'll be a new, new septic design, but I think there's, you know, adequate space for it. The cul-de-sac still meets the turning radius that was required previously, it's actually, the driveway's a little bit shorter now. The visitor parking, I believe, had, well, as, yeah, the, I see that the visitor parking has increased. So what are board members' thoughts on this? Do they feel that this is a minor modification or, you know, I, I don't see any, I don't see any neighbors here that have concerns about it. Have we had any correspondence from neighbors about this?
No, this isn't a public hearing.
Well, it's-
Not yet.
It's, it's, it's a public hearing.
This is, this aspect is not a public hearing, the determination of whether or not it's substantial or insubstantial.
But we're, we're doing it in public session.
Yeah.
It's been, it's been on the, it's been on the agenda. I just want to make sure that, you know, neighbors, neighbors have a chance to know about it. We were very much criticized, and rightfully so, for having, you know, the South Walpole 40B project, which was denied, and then there was a settlement made, and the neighbors didn't, you know, seem to know about it. But this has been on the agenda. Did the neighbors get, they didn't get notice about this?
They don't get notified in this process.
Right. So where, how do people feel? Do they think this is a minor modification or major modification, or insignificant or significant modification?
I would think that insignificant is what I would lean towards. All two bedrooms, same unit units, parking increased from owner to rental, I think that's what we're talking about?
Yep.
So more parking, less bedrooms?
Yeah, I would tend to agree. I think it's a, actually it's a better plan than the original and the one we just saw before this, so I think we're heading in the right direction, and I would be, I think, open to, to deem it as substantial, to get this thing off the ground.
Shane?
Yeah, I agree. I agree, it's a lower density, more parking, like you said, and really the biggest change is owned versus occupied versus rental, so.
And that is one that would trigger, you know, the determination, but you know, that, that would allow us to say it was a major modification. But I also recognize that it's relatively, you know, this is a small development, eight units, so what do you think, Tim?
I agree with what they've been saying, less bedrooms, less impervious, more green space, I don't think it's going in the wrong direction, that's for sure.
Okay. One of our board members, Judy Conroy, who's not here tonight, when she said she wasn't coming to the meeting, just said that, you know, in the text to me, that she felt that it was a, it was a significant modification. So that, that's Judy's input, so I just thought I'd put that out there for, for other board members. Drew?
So while I appreciate this, the change in spreading out the units and opening up more green space, and I, I still stand by the fact that I'm a little concerned because each of the units now have full basements, egress, two egresses out of the basements, an office in the first floor that could be converted into a bedroom, and then also a loft that could also be converted into a bedroom. So while you stand by these are the bedroom counts, I guess there's a lot of alternatives that could be done by potential renters or, or whatever. I, I encourage and like the fact that it increases the amount of subsidized housing within the town of Walpole, but I also think that that brings some challenges with temporary owners, temporary residents and long-term longevity of, of residents within the town. We, we've taken out garage parking because we, and, you know, there'll be a potential for more parking within the, the unit, but, or sorry, the development. So those are my concerns, but overall, I guess, you know, from a major or minor modification standpoint, I guess I still lean towards that it's, it's somewhat major, you know, it's, it's, it's got enough significance behind it, we're not talking about moving one unit to the left a little or to the right, we're, we're completely changing the, the character of the units previously approved by eliminating the parking and, I'm sorry, the garages and relocating all the units.
Can I just speak to the, the septic point that you brought up? We'll record a deed restriction, we have no problem doing that about number of bedrooms. Even though the garages are going to be removed, there'll be more parking, more guest parking. And for a rental development, eight units are counted towards your town's subsidized housing versus condo sale project, which is only two. So, you know, even if, you know, I, I personally think it's insubstantial, but it's beneficial, the changes anyways. And another point is, we, we have no additional information to bring to a new hearing, this is, you know, we've submitted everything.
So Drew, I think you bring up some good points, and you've actually answered two of them. One, it actually, it would be very clear, the zoning board would say, these are, these are two bedroom units, that's, that's what you're going to rent them as, that you can't advertise them as, you know, you know, two bedrooms with a bedroom loft, that's, that's just how, these will be recorded, and as you said, you know, deed restriction on, because it has to deal with the septic, that it, it actually, the town can be protected on that. I think, I think we have actually, the town has more control because it's rental units on how they're rented out as two bedrooms, as opposed to if they were single family, if they were ownership, then somebody could actually own it and then do a lot, a lot more, and it would be harder to enforce. So, and that's pretty much what you said.
Yeah, I agree.
And then the other thing, and I had walked in, I hadn't made up my mind whether it was substantial or insubstantial, if we ask the applicant to come back for a full, a full hearing on this, what more information are we going to get? I think this is, this is the, the plan that they're, they're providing, we've, we've seen the, the renderings, I think that we've got a lot more information on this, you know, this full set of plans, including, as we're looking here, the, the septic, do you have landscape buffers in here? I know that was one of the things that we talked about, yep. You see the planting, the, the plan for plantings, so to Mr. Murphy's point, I don't know what more we would ask for, is there anything else somebody would want to see at this point?
I don't know so much that it was a matter of what I'd want to see, I guess just the abutters input would be certainly appreciated to get some consent out of that, but. I, I agree with the, the deed restriction, like stated by the applicant representative, and yeah, no, I, that was really my, and, and really back to the, the garage and the storage, and that was brought up by previous applicant's representation with converting, you know, didn't know which units were going to be three bedroom and which ones would be two, and that, and it was information that the applicant provided to the board that said, well, we can convert any of them, and that's really what raised the concern within my, my stance, so. But yeah, I, I guess really, I think these are great plans, they've provided a ton of information, but really, the only difference with this and a, an actual hearing would be the abutters notification and hearing from abutters as to any concerns they had with changing this plan that we previously approved.
And I think, Drew, you know me and my, my view on public input, this has been in the, it's been on the agenda, you know, people did not get a, a notice in the mail, but it has been on the agenda, it's, it's been on, you know, it's on TV.
I would only add, just then, Mr. Murphy mentioned about the, the deed restriction to the, based upon the bedroom count, so a decision like this, if the board determines it's insubstantial, obviously I'd have to do a write-up like that and provide that to Mr. Murphy, we'd record it as part of the record, but obviously it doesn't have the same appeal process. But that would exist as like an addendum to the existing comprehensive permit, so that would have to be recorded with that comprehensive permit. So the changes that are reflected in this plan, essentially everything that was previously conditioned, that does, that is not impacted by the change, such as like the, the parking count, those are still all in place, so that's just kind of one thing to think of.
Right. And I think, to what you're saying, this then becomes the plan of record. This is, this is the plan, what's shown here at these, these dimensions, this is how it's going to be built out, and you know, with, as you correctly said, with a deed restriction saying that these are all two bedroom units and, you know, that's, that's what they are, that these are two bedroom units.
Just to clarify, there's one three bedroom.
You are correct, unit three. Is that because it's required to be? Why is, I thought-
We touched on that last time, it's typically ten percent of a 40B development would have three bedrooms, so the applicant agreed to have one.
Okay. Yeah, I see, I see it right here now. So again, it would be, in the, in our decision, if we approve it as a, you know, insubstantial modification, that it, it would be a condition that they are seven, seven two bedroom and one three bedroom unit.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Based on, and we can cite, cite the stamped plan here, I think we've got enough information that they could go forward with, feel better about that?
Yeah.
Anybody else have thoughts, concerns? Okay. So, does somebody want to make any, any further discussion on this? So this isn't actually a hearing, so I don't think we have to close anything.
We don't have to close anything, I'd probably identify who the voting members are and then just take a vote whether or not, if you like, probably in the affirmative.
Okay.
Good.
So it would be that we vote in the affirmative that it's an, a insubstantial change. Do you have anything else to add?
No.
It's going your way, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna shut up, yeah.
And are you the engineer for this?
I'm the developer.
You're the builder?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So does, somebody want to make a motion to find that the revised plan for Moose Hill Road, what's the, for the, the enclave, and this revised plan is dated-
What's that?
February 17th, 2025, as shown on the plans, and with the renderings shown on the plans dated twenty, sorry, February 19th, 2025, for Moose Hill Road duplex, two Moose Hill Road duplexes, that set of plans, we find that that is a insubstantial modification of the previously issued 40B permit. Somebody want to make that motion?
Still moved.
Okay, moved by Dave. Lauren, you've got, you got that down? Okay. With the conditions of referencing the plans, obviously, and that these are seven two bedroom units, one three bedroom unit, and they are to, they are rental. Anything else, Patrick?
I would recommend just conditioning the parking, how it was explained within the letter submitted by the applicant, I think it's 23 spaces, 12 of which are publicly accessible, one parking space within the driveways of units 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6, two spaces within the driveways of 5, 7, and 8. Just to, just to clarify that, because that would contradict with, you know, what's on the comprehensive permit. And then I just, I had a recommendation, maybe just had, make sure that, you know, final determination of site engineering, including utilities and stormwater management, is to be approved by town engineer prior to the issuance of any building permits, which would be typical anyway.
What Patrick said, those as conditions, I believe it would be three and four, so, yeah. And because it is a modification, things are going to change, but they all have to meet the requirements of the, the town engineer.
Okay. One more, sorry, just accept, accept as modified herein, all the provisions of the decision, which is the original decision, shall remain in full force and effect, so.
Good, thank you.
Who's the voting members?
Oh, yeah, so. So voting members will be the regular members, Mark, Dave, me, Drew, and Tim, you want to vote on this?
Sure.
And then Tim Hagler will also vote on this. Okay. So the motion has been made, we've got conditions, and we don't have to close it because it's not a hearing. Does somebody-
I think we need a second.
Yep, does somebody want to second it? Okay, second by Mark. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, okay. Good luck with the project.
Thanks very much.
Okay. The next thing we have on the, the agenda is a discussion of basically the, the rules and guidelines for, for the zoning board. And Patrick and Lauren put this together, and what it is, it's just regulations, how, how we run the meetings, what the requirements are, and other towns have it, it's, I think, a very helpful document. I went through it, there's a, a couple minor, like just editorial things that need to be corrected, but I thought it was a, it's a, it's a helpful document, and what I'd like people to do is review it over the next couple weeks. Any changes, send them to Lauren and Patrick, and then if, if we want, we can vote on this at our meeting on, in April. But it, it really, it's helpful, so if somebody comes onto the board, we can give them this and say, this is actually the roles and responsibilities of a zoning board. Some people know what that is, some people don't, some people are learning along the way, so I think it's a great thing to have. Does anybody have, we're, we're not going to go through it tonight, but I just wanted to pass it out to everybody, and you know, do people feel they'd want to vote on this a, a month from now?
I think it's a brilliant document and absolutely necessary, and I think we should be able to vote on it.
Yeah, okay.
I have one question.
And people can, sorry, sorry, the public has access, obviously has access to that as well, like if someone wanted to, want to-
Like if someone wanted to understand what we do and how we do it, what our purview is?
Yeah, I mean, just to provide a little bit of background to it, I mean, most, first of all, the section, there's a section of our zoning, I think it's section 2 of our zoning, that provides the board with the authority to essentially put together their own rules and regulations for, you know, how, you know, organization, how an application's processed, how the board, you know, the procedure for how you conduct yourselves during a public hearing. But yeah, most of our towns have that. It's a great document just for any member, as well as members of the public that want to have a better understanding of how the process is.
I think it's great.
Yep. And again, to Patrick and Lauren for putting this together. I think it's, I think it's a good thing for the town, it's a good thing for the board, so we'll take some time to go through it, but what's planned on, that's everybody's homework, myself included for...
Just one question, Patrick. Was there a rhyme or reason that you went to those three specific communities for examples or just kind of random? Mostly just want to keep it regionally. I always, whenever I... Is it zoning change or any sort of like feedback? Just I try to look at similar communities and how they're structured. Mansfields I knew particularly, just for a separate reason, so that was kind of the basis for it, but then, yeah, mostly just try to look regionally and what other towns have for comparison.
Yeah, there's some towns around here that have three-member boards, so it would just be a little bit different if we were using those, but, you know...
No, I understand. I really didn't have any... There's no ulterior motive there. I just was curious, like why Foxborough, Mansfield, and Easton?
Because they've got pretty good zoning bylaws and they had, they had...
Good starting point. They had a tight ship.
Fair enough. My say, it's a starting point, it's kind of my basis.
Okay, and we have the meetings from, sorry, the minutes from February 5th, if people had a chance to review those. I went through them, I didn't see anything wrong on them.
Yeah, it looked fine to me. You jumped out.
Did anybody find anything on them?
Good.
So, if somebody wants to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 5th, does anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dave. Seconded by Drew. Any further discussion on the minutes?
Are you going to abstain?
I wasn't here, so...
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Shane abstains. Okay. So, the minutes are approved. Okay. Does anybody have anything else for the board? Okay. Okay, that being the case, does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Drew.
Second.
Seconded by Dave. Oh, Mark. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Okay.